Good morning, we'll call the meeting in order for the day. First item on our agenda is to approve our today's agenda.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard on any item not on the agenda. Saying none, approval to pay bills and vouchers.
Most do approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Solid waste, Kirk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Good.
Good. Bushy-tailed. I don't know about bushy-tailed. Sorry. I'm here today for a couple of items before you. The first item is an item that we talked about in pick committee. And essentially what it is, is it's hiring of a truck driver. And this truck driver would be serving two functions. The first function would be to haul trash from Moorhead over to the Perm facility. And the second purpose is to haul leachate from our landfill down to the wastewater treatment plant. The reason we are approaching today on these two items, the first issue is we, as you all know, we signed an agreement with Prairie Lakes to take ninety-four hundred tons of waste over to Perm on an annual basis. We had hoped that we'd be able to backhaul, but there's some technical problems between their facility and our facility, they do not enable that. So as a result, what we've been doing is we've been having the City of Moorhead take the material over there. And then the containers, both containers have been deadheading both ways. City of Moorhead has been really unable to meet their requirements due to staffing issues. And so as a result, we've really fallen short as far as our obligation to Prairie Lakes. So it's hoped by having our own truck driver, we're going to be able to do that. The second part of the responsibility of the job is to haul leachate. We spend about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year on transportation of leachate alone. And I think that there's an area here that we can save considerably amount of money. So with that, as I said, we went to the pick committee last week.
Yep.
And so if you have any questions, and Grant and Kevin were both there, let's stand ready to answer any questions.
Well, and there's two items here, one is the tractor and the other is the employee.
Right. And I was going to do the tractor second, I can talk about that now if you'd like, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the second part of it is, is obviously the truck driver needs to have a semi-tractor to drive, so we're asking for approval of that. And also, we've worked out an arrangement with the City of Moorhead to use one of their old, and actually they were going to get rid of this walking floor trailer for transportation of the material. And then also a tanker. And Larry has been looking quite a bit to see what we could find in that. And we thought it'd be about seventy-five thousand dollars cost, capital cost for that equipment.
Kevin? Well, Mr. Chairman, I, we certainly can't hire the driver if we don't have the truck for him to drive. They go hand in hand. But it's, if you do the math on this, and you do your truck driver, and then you do the one-time purchase of your tractor and the tanker, your first year you're going to be slightly over the hundred and seventeen. But after that, you know, we're no longer paying that hundred and seventeen thousand. There's certainly going to be maintenance and those type of things that come up on it. But I think this is a really good, good move on the part of solid waste to do this. I think it's a long-term saver.
Well, we're going to save our money on hauling the leachate. But it'll also then help us to meet our obligation to Perm.
Right.
To haul the waste, which we need to do, so.
And I might, and I might add, like I mentioned to the board last weekend, Frank was gone, but the other issue with that is if we're not supplying our fair share of the material to the Perm facility, it also can be, have an impact on the revenues generated by that facility, which then could also come back to us if the revenues are too low. So it's just an all-around good move on our part.
Wayne?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kirk, the seventy-five thousand dollars, can you purchase that piece of vehicle for that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Larry, as I said, has looked at different equipment and he feels comfortable.
This is not a new one, then?
No, it's not new, absolutely not new. It's a used tractor, but it has reasonable amount of miles that should serve our needs for quite some time.
Curious, what would a new one run, two or three times that?
A new one would be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Larry.
For new?
Yeah.
You're talking the tractor, be seventy-five thousand a month, and a tanker over above that would be another forty. And then there also has to be a scale put on, on board scale for moving purposes for that.
Okay.
So you can go over that.
So, I mean, down the line, you'd be looking at a new one, I would say.
Probably a new used one, but I wouldn't anticipate that for quite some time.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, one of the things that I've been impressed by, you know, out of the landfill in particular, because they use a lot of equipment, but the maintenance that they do, you know, preventive maintenance, it's just been, it's just outstanding. So we get an awful lot of miles out of the equipment that we have.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we purchase for seventy-five thousand dollars the vehicle.
And the employee.
Do you want to both?
Well, let's do a separate motion.
Separate, okay.
I'll second the motion with the, with the comment here. This is, a lot of times, these types of actions will go through our, also go through our SWAC. And this has not gone through SWAC.
No.
But the issue of the driver did go through the pick committee. And what's really important here is, we're meeting with Prairie Lakes again Friday. And at our last meeting last month, they were already very concerned about the low levels of merchant, or not, of waste that we have been sending. We have not been meeting our agreement. So this, this can't wait, this needed to be done. That's, I guess that's.
Yeah, we'll be going to report that at the meeting on Friday.
Yeah, well, we have, we have a SWAC meeting Thursday morning, and we can fill that, then in on that as well.
Where, how are we going to pay for this, Kirk?
We have money in the solid waste budget.
Okay. Frank?
Question, you say due to staffing issues at the City of Moorhead, are we in the City of Moorhead working together on this project, or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, we are. The, the issue that they have is, is that they, the person that they were using on, on the transportation is a streets person, not a sanitation person, so they're basically a person short. It's been stressed out quite a bit. So, the, the help that we're getting from the city is they're going to be loading the container, obviously we're using their facility and their equipment in that regard.
I might add, Frank, there's, there's a couple of components there. Number one, when we did go into Prairie Lakes, now that became a much longer distance for them to travel with certain, certain times, instead of just going to our landfill, they're going all the way to Perm and back. And then, of course, what happened in January is they just brought Oakport on board, and so they have a significant new amount within their city that they have to maintain themselves. And it is our responsibility to make sure the trash gets either to the landfill.
Well, so I thought we were working together on this.
We are.
And then it looks like staffing issues at City of Moorhead, well, I don't know if I was referring to it the right way or not, you know, it's.
I'd probably, I'm not, I'm not very good with words, so I'd probably do.
Because I feel we were working together on this.
I think if it, I think if it would have been strictly the hire of a, of a driver without the leachate issue, that, which is all our issue, then I would have probably suggested that we go to Moorhead to do a cost share.
Okay.
But I did, the vast majority of this is going to be savings on the part of the county, so.
I think as far as the leachate collection, we're going to be doing at least one load a day, probably some days two and three, depending on what kind of rainfall we get. So I mean, it's, it's pretty significant, and I think it's a, it's a real positive thing.
And this is a full-time driver?
Yeah, full-time job. The, you know, I think we're going to be able to keep them busy all the time, you know, driving between Perm and the leachate collection. But this person also would be responsible for other landfill tasks as assigned. He'd be treated just like anybody else out there. He might have to run a compactor, you know, front-end loader, he might have to pick paper, you know, I mean, it's a whole wide variety of positions he may have, or she may have to be responsible for.
And I know this went through pick committee, my concern is that there's just so much competition for drivers. Are you anticipating that be an issue with pay scales?
Yeah, it could be. When I, when I did the work, calculation, wage calculator, it, we, the PDQ mirrors very closely the highway department truck drivers' PDQs. And really, the only difference with this position is it's going to require Class A, whereas the truck drivers out at highway only require Class B, but they're supposed to get a Class A within six months. So this one would require a Class A right off the bat. The, and they're currently at grade eight, which is about forty-eight thousand dollars per year. I think the thing with the truck drivers is, it's either feast or famine. In the, in the summertime, with all the construction going on, they're getting paid a heck of a lot more than that probably. But then in the winter months, they're, you know, not working as much.
Dry unemployment, probably.
Yeah, and so we're, we're offering a year-round position, steady money through Friday-type stuff. But it still may be a little bit difficult to get some truck drivers at that wage, we may have to look at the wage a little bit.
They're doing overtime, too, I think.
We try to keep our overtime down as much as we can, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I, just to follow up to Jenny's question, because it was a good one, and we did discuss it quite at length in pick. And one of the, one of the things that we see that can be slightly different with this than a lot of the truck drivers going out on the market for jobs, is that this one, they're going to be home every night. You know, there's going to, there's, there's a lot of people who want to drive truck, but they just want to be home every night. A lot of times, and when you get into semi-drivers, they're over the road and they don't get to be home every night.
Right.
So there's, you know, there's give and take that they're going to have to decide on, but we think there is going to be a market for this.
Well, I hope there is. I mean, I definitely, we are, have given approval for the tractors, so I just.
Yeah, we don't want to be, that's sitting out there, not putting a hundred miles on it, for sure.
I, I hope we can fill it soon, so I so move that we approve the request for the truck driver.
We haven't voted on the tractor.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Well, let's, let's, any more discussion on the tractor and trailer? Saying none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, now, okay, now we've got a tractor and a trailer, we better.
I'll move again, yep.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to hire a driver for the tractor and trailer. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I want to thank Kirk for working on this, and I, hopefully, when we meet with Prairie Lakes on Friday, we'll be able to give them some good news that helps on the way in terms of fulfilling what our, our requirements were in the contract, so.
I agree. One other thing, Mr. Chairman, I know some of you are aware of this, but I don't think some of the other commissioners are aware of this, but this last legislative session, the special session, we received six hundred thousand dollars in the matching grant for final design of our solid waste project, so that was just excellent, excellent news. We're all pretty excited about that. I think it's pretty positive, it's going to save the county an awful lot of money. The state is really, really involved. In fact, we're meeting with the state next Tuesday, and actually, at the SWAC meeting, actually, the, the head of the division that's responsible for the grant is coming up, so it's pretty positive, I feel pretty good about that.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Kirk, thanks for your work on.
Appreciate that.
Paying that money, that's excellent work, so, it's a big deal for us, so.
That's all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Section corner remonumentation program update, that's quite a mouthful, good morning.
Explain that word first.
I always come here with big topics, it seems like. I'm, I'm back just to give you an update and let you know what we've been up to. If you remember, at the end, during last year, we had some discussions, and we decided to discontinue the office of the county surveyor.
Mm-hmm.
And then we've been working as a group, we had a large committee, and we broke down into a smaller group, which was Diane, Dave, and myself, to figure out how do we want to handle that, how, as a county, how do we want to deal with those kind of things? So we've been doing that the last few months, and one of the things that was also happening was this, the legislature was changing some of the rules that have to do with monumentation. And it was kind of good timing that we were able to have that happen here, too. But I was reading statutes, which is always fun, but I, I had a part I was going to actually read to you, I thought was interesting. It says, "When the county board determines that monuments established by the United States in the public land survey to mark public land survey corners have been destroyed or are becoming obscure, it may employ a land surveyor to perpetuate corners with durable magnetic monuments." Which is one of the big projects that we've been talking about, and that's what we're looking at having done, is the section corners reestablished for us, or government corners. In Clay County, we've got four thousand six hundred and seventy-five of these corners, about eleven hundred of them are found. So we've got quite a few that aren't. Our staff in the GIS office has been working for, well, for years, we've been maintaining the databases to deal with that, but we, what we've been doing the last several months is prioritizing those corners, to figure out which ones we have, which ones we need, which ones are not as relevant, as we're trying to come up with a plan of where we'd like to have pre-monumentation done. An interesting side note here, is because you're all wondering why I'm the guy talking to you, but in that same statute, it's, the very next section says that the county board may, "The county board of any county may levy tax upon all taxable property in the county for the purpose of defraying the expense incurred to preserve the restoration of monuments under this section, the preservation and establish of control monuments for mapping activities, modernization of land records for parcel-based mapping, and the establishment of geographic information systems." Well, three of those systems I already manage, so that's why monumentation ended up to me, because it's the fourth. So what we decided we're going to do, what our plan is, we're going to have a request for proposals go out, which we've drafted, we actually got one from our friends in Morrison County, and we revised it to meet what we're having, and we had Jenny review it, and she made some suggestions, which we adopted to it. It's basically requesting proposals from survey firms to do some of the things that we want it done as a county, which is to check our plats as they're coming in, some special projects, if they need them, just some assistance, sometimes we need the help of a surveyor for certain things. And then the biggest one is the public land survey corner maintenance. So we've got a proposal ready, what we'd like to do is go to the next step, which is take it out to the surveyors, ask them to come back with it. As part of this, the whole change, what we are revising our ordinances, basically what we're doing is our, in our subdivision ordinance, if we remove the, all the parts where it says, talks about the office of the county surveyor, and replace that with, in most cases, with the office of the county recorder, because that's where the, actually, the records are stored. We've got that happening, we've got some new laws that are happening, we've got the change in this. What we'd like to do in July is we're going to have a meeting of all the survey firms. We'd like to bring them all in, talk to them about this, this is basically the big thing, we want to give them all the proposal, say, "Here, we'd like you guys to respond to this, as well as, when you're out there doing survey work, we'd like you to make sure that you're following the guidelines that we've got, then the new rules that are coming into play, so that the stuff that they're producing is coming back to us like it's supposed to." One of the biggest issue where we deal with is, some of these survey firms are doing section corner work, but the documents aren't coming back to us, which means they're not available to us as well as the public to use. The goal of that, of the whole program, is the more corners we can relocate and get established and get recorded, then that saves costs for everybody downstream, you know, if that corner's already there, because all of our land records tie to these, these corners. This is what, all the records since the eighteen fifties are tied to these things, so it's really important that we know exactly where they are. But we also have other needs, as I mentioned, as far as help with the surveyor. So what I'm here today is just to tell you, we've been, we've been talking about this, and it's been going on, and we've got a plan, and we've got a proposal, and I'm asking for your permission to send out the proposal. Then hopefully in a month, six weeks, thereabouts, I'm supposing, who knows, I'll be back and we'll have some recommendations of what we want to do to move ahead.
Okay, questions for Mark?
Yeah, the one item, you said they, they're not reporting back to you what they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any type of plan to, if they don't report back, why, why aren't we doing something about it now, or what?
Well, that's part of what this meeting we want to have in July is more of an education piece, I think, to just let them know that we'd like them to record these documents.
So they're not required to report back?
No, but, not when they're doing work for private individuals, they aren't, you know, they aren't required to put that back to us. But what we want to do is encourage them to do so, and we've already put in place some methods to do that, which is, we don't charge them any money for those documents to be recorded, those kind of things. So what we're going to do is get them to follow.
Kevin? Mark, in your proposal that you have, are you, are we, are we trying to establish a timeline with so many, finding so many corners a year, or anything like, is that, what, you must have something like that within your proposal?
Yep, actually, yes, exactly. We have on here that, we'll have a, we left it relatively generic in here, because it, the idea would be, we'd use this multiple times, but we have in here a phrase, basically, the location corners to be reestablished will be determined by our, by our staff. And what we'll do is, based upon the proposals, we're going to get back an estimate of what these might cost us, and then follow those, here, okay, so we can do, and I don't know what, whether we'll do thirty a year, or fifteen.
Yeah, I think you might, what might be a good, good idea for doing would be to talk with Brian, and you can see what, in the past, we had actually budgeted, because we did have budgeted so much for land surveying.
Yeah, and we'll do the same, and I think what we need now is to get a response back from our surveyors to say.
Right, no.
Because, because I think the surveyors are, were having the same issue that you were just talking about with truck drivers.
Right.
There's really a lot of work out there.
Right.
And we're hoping to hit them wintertime, because section corners are something they can do in the, in the off-season.
Sure.
So that's our plan, is to do that. But yeah, until we can get some proposals back, what they're looking for for cost.
Now, whether, you know, there was always the argument to whether or not we put enough money into that annually to do that, but I, I think, you know, it'd probably be a good idea for the county to come up with a plan, how, how many years do we want this to take?
Right.
And, and kind of work it that way, do, I don't think we want to spread this thing out over twenty-five years to get done. As important as those corners are.
Right.
To every landowner, because every landowner's four corners are dependent on that master corner.
Exactly.
So it's a.
Yeah.
So it is significant to do, but I, I, I'm, I'm going to be anxious to see what your, what your plan calls for.
We'll see that. And what, the big difference between us doing it this way and how we did it in the past with the surveyors, we have control of where they're going to be.
Right.
That's, I think that, to us and the staff, that's really a big thing.
So with today's technology, and it's remarkable technology with GPS and all that stuff, it's, you would think if you have one, you could just zone in on that thing, just point, that's exactly where that corner is.
That's the hope, but it doesn't always work that way. Partially because of, some of the records out there have been damaged, removed, destroyed, and, yeah, it's, I don't know. I, I don't know, I'm not a surveyor, so I don't know exactly.
I mean, they can pinpoint things to, fractions, to fractions of inches.
And that's, and you know, that's where it comes back to be really important to us, and what we do is, one of the new things we ask for is for what's called eastings and northings, which is an X-Y of where these things are, coming from the GPS. With that, we go into our mapping system, and we say, "Okay, this section corner is now exactly at this point." And we take our, what's called a parcel fabric, and we basically stretch it to that point, and it realigns all of our property lines and everything, section corners, township boundaries, everything to those newly refined corners. So it really improves our mapping accuracy, which helps us in a lot of other things, so it's a, it's a really good thing.
Dave, did you have a comment?
Yeah, once those corners are all, Kevin, you're right, you can give it kind of send me your accuracy, but what they need to do is they need to rewalk in or find them, and then, you know, it, it doesn't matter how much technology you sell, go out there and find it, go to the world, find our records, and stuff like that.
Can't you just go out there with a little metal detector?
Well.
Those days, they're gone, or what?
Well, they still do that, the problem is, in some, many cases, they're gone.
They're gone. Well, that's what, but then, somebody has to replace them.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, and so, how you measure that, or, I thought in place of measuring, you could have a deal, it's a little infrared thing that comes out and says, "Here's where it was."
I wished, it was so easy.
Darn it, I thought technology was there.
Not, not.
Okay, one of the more wishes on this, Mark.
I would move that they send out the proposal.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries, thanks, Mark. Dave, approval of annual over-dimensional moving permit, David Overbow. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. We've been getting a lot of requests over the last few years with regard to just a simple over-dimensional move. Right now, we charge twenty-five dollars apiece for these, and if they're, you know, maybe I'll just go over the current legal dimensions, as set forth by the state, eighty thousand pounds is the current legal weight, the width is eight feet, six inches, legal height is thirteen feet, six inches, and the length is seventy-five feet. So anything over any of those parameters needs, at the current time, a single move permit can be done online or over the phone, or they could come into the highway department. What we would propose is an annual permit that was pretty much modeled after what Mindot is doing, or what the state's doing. And what it would do is, it would not increase the legal weight at all, I mean, that stays at eighty thousand pounds, nothing changes there, because it's detrimental to the, the roadways themselves. But what we would allow them to do is to move something that could be as wide as sixteen feet, as high as fourteen feet, and as long as ninety-five feet. So any one of those last three parameters, we feel they don't really need a lot of oversight on our end. There is some additional things that they would need to do that would be spelled out in the permit, such as, they would still need oversized load signs and flashing lights if they're twelve feet wide or over, they need the flags on the back of the trailer if they're wider than eight feet, six inches, and then they'd need rear escorts if they're between fourteen and a half and sixteen feet wide. So there's some things like that, and they need to always follow the bridge posted limits and the widths, as well as spring road restrictions as well, is another little bit different scenario during that time. So what we'd like to do is propose an annual permit that they could buy, the, the cost for this permit would be the exact same as what the state charges, it's a hundred and twenty dollars per tractor-trailer kind of a combination. So if they've got three trucks that haul from, let's say, a business that sells farm equipment or something, then they would buy three permits, one permit annually for each one of the units. We still have some maintenance fees on our permit program, as well as a little bit of oversight, but not near the amount that we have today. So some of these companies are spending upwards of two to three thousand dollars a year in this sort of thing, so this would be, I think would be a big, a good deal for them. You know, if, if they exceed those parameters, they still need to call in on a single basis, but I think there's quite a few, you know, it would take about ten moves before they would break even on something like this, or, you know, even a little bit less than that, so.
Do they have anything right now that's comparable to this permit?
Not really, well, somewhat. I guess Transsystems has an annual permit for the sugarbeets. They pay, and that's, you know, that modeled after the state as well, there's a six-axle and a seven-axle permit, three hundred dollars for the six-axle, five hundred dollars for the seven-axle, that allows them weight, though. And a lot of that hauling gets done in the wintertime when the roads are frozen. I know Clay and Polk County kind of went together and followed the state on that, but that's really about it.
We have an overweight permit.
We do have an annual overweight permit, so if a, a business is three miles or less from a ten-ton roadway, they are allowed ten-ton loads in that short distance. So we, we do sell that annual permit, too, and that's a hundred dollars a year for that as well.
Okay. The other question I was on, the width, you know, when you're talking from eight feet to sixteen feet, you doubled the width.
Yeah, it does sound like a big, a big increase, and like you said, that's, it is followed after what the state has, most of our roadways are, well, all of our roadways are at least twelve feet wide, that's the legal lane. that's the legal lane width, and then our very minimum roadway is four foot of shoulder, so that's your sixteen right there. Uh, most of our roadways though actually have eight-foot shoulders, so we've got twenty feet on each half of the center line. So that's why I, I was a little worried about that too, and the more I thought about it, I thought, you know, I guess, uh, even if the, a little bit of the load would hang off the road a little bit, you know, like the tire itself would probably still be on, on asphalt or, you know, that sort of thing, but, uh, it is a little wider than, than what you'd expect, you know, the height, they only allow six additional inches on the height, they do allow twenty feet on the length, but they allow quite a bit, five and a half feet or so on the width, so.
For those extra wide ones, you're requiring escorts.
Yep, yep, the escort, the extra wide ones, uh, still has a rear escort. I think anything over sixteen feet's got to have front, front and rear, and it would require a single move permit, but, uh, if it's between fourteen and a half and sixteen, they do have a rear escort as well.
We have to remember, we have a, you know, a couple of significant businesses in Clay County that, that do transport, uh, farm machinery that's, can be very wide and we certainly need to be able to, uh, support their efforts in getting their product to market and, uh, if they're not going to go on a, on a road where they're going to go.
Yeah, true.
You know, so, um.
It'll save a little time on our end as well, like all these single move permits that we're taking that might be nine or ten feet wide, uh, which, you know, really have no, no impact to the roadway, they really don't bother anyone else, any other users. I think it's a little bit more of a streamlined process for these guys to make these single moves in a little quicker fashion.
Okay. I'm making a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in both, same sign, motion carries, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Rhonda. Accounts receivable write-off policy.
Oh, what we're going to do is the Lakes and Prairies one first.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
You can edit yourself.
Yeah.
All right, good morning. Um, I am here today with Colleen, uh, Marie Colleen is the, uh, Family and Community Services Director with Lakes and Prairies Community Action Partnership here, and she is, uh, Lakes and Prairies has submitted an application for, uh, funding through the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency to, uh, provide services particularly to our homeless population. Lakes and Prairies has had this, these funds since two thousand and one, and in the past, as a board, you've passed, uh, resolutions in support of that application. Uh, this is services that, um, are provided in Clay County as well as Wilken County, and a part of the application requires a board resolution, so you got one last week from Wilken County and they are looking for that from this board today. So I'm going to let Colleen talk a little bit about the, um, project and answer any questions.
Well, this, uh, project, like Rhonda said, was, is Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Project, or FHPAP. It's basically short-term assistance for households that have a resolution to an emergency, but they just need a little bit of help. So we work really closely with county emergency assistance dollars and other prevention funds in the community as well. Um, but most of the time, it's for deposit or first month's rent for a family or a single that's experiencing homelessness, um, help with an eviction or a past due notice on utilities. Sometimes it's as simple as, you know, we need work boots to go to work so I can pay my rent moving forward. Oftentimes, it's households that have experienced like a medical emergency and so they lost hours, those kinds of things, where it's a, really a one-time limited thing and then they can get back on their feet. Uh, we requested, um, almost nine hundred thousand dollars for the two-year biennium starting July first, and we have since received word that we've been approved for five hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. So, uh, we're very happy with that, it's about a seventy thousand dollar increase over our last biennium, and, um, as we've talked a lot about it and heard at this board, there's an extreme need for this type of assistance in our county. Um, and to give you an idea, about eighty percent of those dollars will likely be spent in Clay County. Um, we cover both counties, but the population in Wilken is, is much smaller and the need is not as intense there. Over the last two years, uh, we've served just over a thousand people with this project, uh, three hundred and seventy-four households, and seventy percent of those are families, including almost five hundred children. Uh, seventy-four percent of those were prevention assistance, so people who just need a little help to stay in their current housing, and twenty-six percent were homeless assistance. And the average cost per household is about five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any questions?
Questions?
Mr. Chair, I move the proposed resolution in front of us.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second, uh, but, but, how is this different than Churches United or whatever?
Sure. This project is really geared toward households that, um, don't need a lot of long-term assistance. So, the project that Churches United is applying for is for permanent supportive housing. They tend to be households that have greater barriers and will need long-term rental assistance.
You said you had around twenty-three percent that are homeless though.
Yep, yep, and typically, those are the households that we're seeing at the shelter that have employment or a way to pay their rent moving forward, but they just need a little help to get into a place to pay that first month's rent and deposit.
So this is more emergency funding if somebody's in trouble and they need to not be evicted, you pay the month's rent, that type of thing.
Yep, and it's really limited to that kind of a one-time.
It's not about building, it's, it's not building any housing, it's.
Right.
Just funding people that are in trouble with.
Yep.
On a short-term basis. Yes.
One of my committee assignments is Lakes and Prairies and I, um, one of my questions was, um, since we do partner with Wilken County, what their response was when you took it to the board, so I do appreciate hearing that, that they are, um, uh, going forward with support as well, so, um, I appreciate that, that partnership with them and, and think it's a good thing to support.
Kevin?
These, these, this grant application, is this in competition with the same, same dollars that Churches United?
This is a separate pot of money. Yep, this is, um, money that's set aside just for this project and then there's only one grantee in each county.
Okay, um, because another project that was here, that was in direct competition, I just, I'm ju, I'm just trying to point out how many statewide are actually.
Right, yeah.
Still trying to apply and gain access to the limited dollars that are out there at the state level.
Right, the Parkview Terrace application was in, is in competition with the Churches United, but this is a different pot of money. Yeah. I was also going to add, as Colleen said, at the county, we do administer an emergency assistance program as well, and that is state and federal dollars, but we spend on average around two hundred thousand a year administering the emergency assistance program. So this, what we are administering and what Lakes and Prairies have, really, we work closely together to make sure that our folks are, they're not eligible for the county funds that we can refer to Lakes and Prairies or vice versa, and so it certainly helps, um, stretch the funds that we have at the county level as well.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in both, same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Colleen, before you go, would you like to tell the board about your recognition that you received?
Sure, um, we were actually honored by Lutheran Social Services of Minnesota, uh, to receive a Financial Advocate Award, um, and that's basically for our work that we do in financial fitness classes, um, and working with people on budgeting and credit repair and asset development. So, it's tied into this project a little bit in that we do that kind of basic budgeting and credit repair, especially with folks that are facing that crisis. Um, but it was really, really exciting and we were honored to be one of five statewide nominees for that award, so.
Great, great work, thank you.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you. Okay, Rhonda, now the accounts receivable write-off policy.
All right, well, I have Sandy Thorne with me for this. This is, um, if you recall, back in November, um, the board passed the, uh, Clay County Social Services Accounts Receivable Write-Off, uh, policy, and I think that did go out in your packet just as a, a refresher of, of the procedures that were put in place at that time. Then we came to the board in December, um, and reviewed with you a couple of the areas that, the detox area and some foster care, that, based on our policy, because of the amounts required, um, board review, so those are noted in here. So there's no action requested, it's just kind of reiterating what we've already done this past year. And then the, um, third item, uh, was it, is it, which is the new, uh, let's see, under foster care, this is the one that's new to the list that didn't require board approval, is that right?
I believe so.
Okay. So, a part of the policy says that we will come and, um, or that an annual report will be provided to the board, and we weren't sure if this would typically in the future just go on consent agenda or how you'd want to handle it, but given this is the first year, we prepared this report and thought we would come and answer any questions.
Question. Jenny?
Uh, I didn't serve on the board at the beginning of December, can you just refresh me, we wrote these off because it was deemed that they were non-recoverable, is that correct?
Right, and, you want to go ahead?
Yep.
Sandy's our expert.
Well, um, what this is, is, yeah, especially in the detox area, it's money that the, the county's already budgeting for, to, to pay for this service, but we try and get some reimbursement.
Okay.
And for a lot of these cases, there's just no ability.
Right.
Um, so, we, we'd had a lot of these cases on the books for twenty years with no success in, in collection.
And it's just a way to clean it up.
Yeah, to clean it up, and we didn't anticipate receiving, uh, revenues on a lot of these, but we do certainly try the best we can, and if we can collect some, we do, and it really is a cleanup, because as Sandy said, we hadn't really done anything with this for twenty years, so.
Kevin?
Yeah, that's, that's a requirement, but in this, when this, when this first came out, first, it, it kind of blew up in the media as, uh, multi-million dollar write-off.
Millions.
Yeah, it was millions of dollars in write-offs that was unexpected and it almost came across as though, where are we going to have to come up with this money to, to do this? Well, we actually budget for, for those every year, because you can't, you know, you can't get money out of certain people that have, when they have nothing.
Right.
But, so, so we plan for it, the service still has to be provided, state mandated to do it, um, but, uh, the state also now has, requires us to show it as a receivable until we do write it off, so.
When we started the problem, uh, or at least when it became an issue, it was, we were going back for many, many years.
Right.
That was where some of the confusion was, is that, so we're trying to do it on a regular basis.
But, part of, part of that was the change at the, the state auditors level when they all of a sudden said, you've got to start writing these things off, so.
Right, and future reports, you know, again, this was our first year of cleanup, so, um, it, it does go back a number of years, so.
We did one last year.
Well, we, we came in and, but they're accounted for in this report, so they, this is the annual report.
This is, this is the twenty-fourteen report.
Okay, okay, all right.
So in the, in the following years, um, we certainly can send a report like this over for consent agenda or set it on for discussion, whatever you would like at the time, but, so.
Okay, one of the board's wishes?
Well, I, Rhonda, I, I wouldn't really like it to be on consent, I, I think it always, because it is a significant dollar, we're going to be talking about annually, we may have to re, uh, say annually what it is and why we're doing it and that it's, it's not as it appears to be.
Right, okay.
But that we did budget for it.
All right. And is this a format that seems, um, again, this is our first annual report, so is this a formlet, format that, um, seems reasonable and clear?
I think so.
Okay. All right, we will continue that process.
Yeah, we need a motion, uh?
Well, I don't know if we need a motion.
No? Just for information, okay. Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
This was just from, Mr. Chair, just for information's sake, and Rhonda and I discussed it, thought we should bring it to the board for their education.
Should take a five-minute break.
Right.
Next item on our agenda is Performance Measurement Program for two thousand and fifteen. Good morning, Darren.
Thank you. Well, um, don't ask me any hard questions, cause my day has started out tough already. I went to make coffee and put my K-cup in and the crew, you know, started, walked away, came back and, uh, forgot that I had put my cup underneath, because I had coffee all over the place.
Those were great, as long as there's a cup there.
Yeah, you have to have a cup underneath there, I found that out this morning.
All right.
So I was, I was thinking about calling in sick and tired, but, uh, I didn't want to miss the county picnic today, so, all right, um, that's the only reason, yeah, yeah. It's the only reason.
We are in trouble.
So do you want a cup of coffee, so?
No, no, I, I had to make another cup. Um, okay, anyway, the Performance Measurement Program, this is something that we've, uh, participated in, uh, for several years now, and, uh, what this is, is it needs a resolution to continue, uh, participation in this program. Um, what it is, is it's nine areas with twenty-seven items or, um, measures that I get from the different departments, um, I put this report together and then send it up to the state auders, uh, um, department. Um, it does give us a cash back, in, in two thousand and fourteen, we got eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars back for the report, and, uh, the report that is due on Jan, uh, July first is for two thousand and fourteen, um, stats. So, I'm almost done with that report, I'll have it in by July first, and then what this resolution is, is for continuing the program for two thousand and fifteen, so it'll run from January, January first, two thousand and fifteen to December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, with the report due July first of two thousand and sixteen. So, um, most of the information is already tracked within the department, so it's not, it's not a, it's a, it's a large report, but it's not hard to get the information, because most of the things that they're tracking, they're already tracking within their departments. And, um, as part of this, uh, Performance Measurement Report, we also do a, um, citizen survey, and we have had that on our website for the past, probably a month now, um, and have been getting citizens' reports from that. Um, it's right on the front page of our external website, so anybody can go on there, click on the link, takes you through the survey, and, uh, it doesn't take more than probably five or six minutes to do it, so it's not a lengthy survey. And then we include that in the Performance Measurement Report as well. Um, we are required to post the results, uh, by the end of the year, which, once I get the report done, um, we can, I can put that on the website as well, uh, the full report. Um, and other than that, uh, the, the, there is no standard format for the report, um, I've looked at other counties' reports and they're anywhere from a couple pages to, you know, our, we probably have one of the longer reports, cause we look, I get the information from a lot more, um, of the departments. Uh, and participation in this program has been going down, um, since it started, to tell you the truth, I think, um, it started in two thousand and eleven, and at that time, there was thirty-eight counties participating, and as of the two thousand and thirteen, there was only twenty-two, and now it's only nineteen counties participating. So we're one of the few counties that are participating in this, uh, Performance Measurement Report, so, um, other than that, I'm open for questions.
That, that, uh, eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for participation, is that based on the number of employees and they, or how, how do they base what they?
Citizens in the county. I think we get fourteen cents.
So if we participate again, we'd get the same amount?
About the same amount, yes.
Okay.
What do we get out of it?
Eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and input from the citizens.
So what does it tell us?
Well, what, what it's nice about it is we, if we do it every year, we can track, you know, these different areas, these twenty-seven areas, um, you know, are we doing better? Are we doing worse? Is there areas that we should look at to, to, to improve upon or look into? If we have stats that are, you know, going down in the wrong way, it may be an area that we want to look at. So, it, it does give us some things to look at.
So at this point, you still think it's helpful for, it's worthwhile doing it?
Pardon me?
At this point, you think it's still worthwhile to continue to do it?
I, I, I think so, yeah, I mean, it's, um, like I said, uh, most of the departments have this information already, it's just a matter of me putting the report together.[1785.23] a matter of me putting the report together. It, it takes a little while, but I think it's.
Did we get a report last year?
Correct, yes, we did.
Was there, was there any eye-popping stuff that came out?
Nothing that I saw that was drastic changes.
That's why I'm wondering why, why this thing is going from 37 to 20 to 19. Were cities involved with this as well?
Yes.
And I, I knew the city of Moriah bowed out too, didn't they?
Yeah, this is, this is the 2014 report for 2013 and 2014, and it went from 113 cities participating to 47, so they're not participating as much either. And I don't see Moriah on this report.
Sometimes it, it's an indication to me that maybe it's not doing what it was cracked up to do.
Well, that's why I asked if Darren thinks it's worthwhile to continue. You're not, you're not expending over $8,000 worth of your time putting it together, are you?
But, Mr. Chairman, I, maybe it could be a message I could also send, that maybe that, that department that's providing us the $8,400 might be able to come up with a better way to spend the money.
Mr. Chair, on the recommendation, what I heard Darren say, I will move to adopt the motion that he's asking for here.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Brian.
What this would be is to approve the past activity that we've done to get the $8,000, but I think it would be good if there is discussion by the board and they, you don't feel it's worthwhile, so that we don't put the effort in next year. This is something that the legislature came up with, they wanted to guarantee some citizen input, and that's why the survey that we put on the website is about the only thing that really is extra time. The other is reports, just gathering reports that the departments have already put together. So, that, I mean, we'd, we'd like to know if you think that's worthwhile, because we want you to improve this one, because then we get reimbursed the $8,000.
Right.
But next year, we wouldn't put the work into it if you didn't feel it was necessary. So, that would be, that's why, I mean, we're enjoying your discussion now.
Yeah, the, the resolution is actually, if we want to participate for the following year, we've, the last year's resolution said we would participate for 2014, which is the report that's due July 1st.
Yeah, no, no, Darren, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I thought we had to get that in by the end of the, there was a time period in order for us to be approved for the reimbursement of the $8,000.
That's the July 1st.
Was that for the New Year's, the New Year's?
The 2014 resolution to participate was done in July 1st of last year, to say, yeah, well, we, we'll, we'll do it for 2014. That 2014 report is due on July 1st of 2015, with the resolution that we'll continue the program for 2015, which will be due on 2016.
So, we're asking for the money, and we're, and we're.
Yeah, we're, we're providing them, we're providing them the report for 2014, and saying we'll continue the, the program for next year as well.
Kevin. Mr. Chairman, Darren, the, so the report from 2014 has been out on the web, has it?
That would be the 2013 report.
Okay, the 2000, okay, so the, that, and it's been out there for citizens to read?
Correct.
Did we go to Mark or anybody and ask him what the ratio was, or the number of people that actually went to that place? We can track every, everything that goes onto our website.
I did not.
I think that we should ask that question.
Yeah.
Because if, if nobody is going and reading it, what's the point, that's my, that's my point, is what's the point in doing this?
Right.
You know, if it's just good reading material, but, but nobody's reading it, if it's, they want to understand more about what Clay County does, that's, that's fine, but I, I really question how many people are zeroing in on, on this, and.
Well, I think, and, and I don't, I can't remember the exact number, but I think the last survey that we did had like 120 respondents, you know, that responded to the survey itself. Now, how many went back and looked at the results, I don't know.
Well, if this is to, if this is, if this motion is to, I need clarifications of this motion, is to seek the 2015 money, I'm not going to support it, but if it's to get the money from the previous year, I, I obviously would support that, because the work went into it, so.
Yeah, the 2014 report that, that I'm going to be submitting on July 1st, that money should come at the end of the year, this year.
And we've already made that.
We've made this report, we've already done this report.
All right. I've got one I need to vote.
Is this something we do every single year, or is it something we could do every other year?
We can do it as many times as, I mean, it's not like you have to do it every year, it's all voluntary.
But if we did it every year, it would cost $8,000 every year?
Correct. Well, we would, it would cost us.
You get that, you get that much to spend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The money is, that, that's.
It comes, it comes to Clay County.
To yous.
So, what do we put in above that $8,000?
Nothing.
So, we just use that?
It's just a report, just, just a report.
I guess that's why my question was, do you think it's worthwhile? Because if it's, if we're not expending, I mean, if we're actually making a little money on it, and it's not creating a lot of burden on you, and we're getting some feedback from citizens in the county, then I don't see it as a, as a bad thing, right, at this point, but, but if, if it's taking up a lot of your time, and we're not, we're not gaining anything from it, you know, then, then it should be reconsidered. But at this point, at least, what I took from what you said, is that it's not taking a lot of your time.
Yeah, the first couple of reports took a while, just to get, you know, the way we wanted to format it and everything. I think, you know, this year was a little bit easier, next year probably a little bit easier, you get, once you start getting, because this just started in 2011, and we were reporting in 2012, so it hasn't really been going on that long. And, like I said, some of the counties just are very two, three-page report, ours is a little bit more, because I break it down by departments and the statistics, so.
But is one reason that it's not taking a lot of time, is because nobody's using it? I mean, I just want to make sure that we're using our time wisely, even though we're not personally spending Clay County's money, I just want to make sure that it's worthwhile.
Yeah, I, I guess I would have to ask the departments how long it takes them to put the information together, but most of them are tracking that stuff.
The other issue may be that if participation continues to go down, they just may just continue doing it at the state level, so it's likely, so.
Where does this $8,400 come from? Who's paying that? Do us?
Well, the report goes to state auders.
And the state has given us $8,400.
Yeah, I, I don't know where that money comes from, but that's.
They're just nice guys. I just think, I think they could do something better with their $8,400.
They could just send it to us.
Well, I mean, I just, I don't think it helps our citizens at all.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I, I think in the future, maybe it'd be helpful for the board to see more the numbers, as to how many people are actually utilizing that, I mean, I think it would be.
Yeah, I can see if Mark tracked this year's report, and see how many people hit on it, to see, to see if they clicked on it.
And I think there's a way that they can do it, Darren, where somebody clicks on it and they leave it right away, they, they can tell that too, if they've taken time to actually read, you know, sometimes you get on the website, whoop, I didn't want that, and you get right out.
But it still counts it.
It still counts if somebody looked at.
Yeah, that's, you're probably getting above my.
But they have, they have the ability to find those that stay there for a longer period of time, which would indicate they're actually reading the darn thing.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Darren.
All right.
Okay, committee reports.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before I give you my committee report, neither Jenny or I will be able to attend the family healthcare meeting on Thursday, and I'm asking the board if it's all right, meets the rules and regulations of family healthcare that we, I knew that we asked Frank to go as my alternate with Perdian to that meeting.
You have a motion to that effect, Frank, are you available for that? Okay. Got a motion, we have a second?
One second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carries.
And I will find out and get that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, June 18th, Lake Legacy Regional Library Board Meeting, general business, there were financial issues and reports to the state, preliminary budget draft, the director's report, and then we had a strategic update in board member reports, and other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Frank. You.
Of course, I was gone last week, so, but from the week before, I was at Peloponnesian, there was a lot of concerns there, and not a lot, but there were concerns about the road maintenance there, we already discussed that with Ryan, and we've also gone, I went to Yulin City Council meeting, they were very concerned about Highway 34 going through the, going about repairs there, and we also discussed the Chayla information. Other than that, I had a good vacation.
Jenny.
Well, last Tuesday, we did have the Board of Equalization and Appeals. Frank picked an excellent time to be on vacation. There were a lot of concerned citizens. I think the general, what I took from that meeting is, one, there is some serious concerns with foreign land, and I think we have made good steps to kind of address how those evaluations and taxes go, so I hope that we can get something worked out, especially with the legislature. I did miss the planning commission meeting due to that, me, the Board of Equalization, but talked to Tim, and everything was just basic, general business, a couple of permits were issued. I had the extension meeting as well. One of the biggest items out of that meeting was the 4H program coordinator position. The person that was serving in the full-time position has decided to take that halftime position, that we've had some difficulty filling, so that full-time program coordinator position is now open. One other great thing is there's over 400 youth that have involved in the 4H program in some capacity this year, which is up, the livestock at the fair is also up as well. We talked a little bit about their budget requests, everything looks to be on track, nothing too different. I also had, went to the Metro Crog meeting as well, general business, we talked a little bit about the audited financial statements, everything looks great there, they're doing a really good job. And yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health meeting, we had our audit report of all of the, the facilities in the state. Lakeland is doing very well, they're towards the top of all similar structures. Another big thing we talked about is, we've decided to create a search committee, as the executive director has given his one year to retirement, so we talked a little bit about that succession planning, and so they will, will start a separate committee to search for the next candidate. We did talk about the importance of having at least one of all of the counties that are involved on that search committee. Our old commissioner, McCarthy, has volunteered to do that as well, and.
And he is.
I didn't say that.
I said.
Oh, and the other thing, I talked to, talked to some citizens about that Rolag Road 6 that we've had a lot of issues about. We're hoping, once the 34 project is done, we'll be able to, to fix that more effectively, so I hope for the Rolag people, we can get that done, and that commit, that's the rest of my reports.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, the, other than the Tuesday night meeting, which we're here for, I had, I had the Greater Fargo-Moore Economic Development, was their regional workforce study update, it's held last Thursday morning, and it was a very, very good program, and it really highlighted our shortcomings in labor, and there is a full plan of attack out there. Basically, there was five entities that are really working hard on, on, on moving this thing forward with the plan, and they have, they've come up with a strategic plan, and they have several community goals by different, they're really looking for the private sector businesses to also partake in finding ways to resolve this. We're, we're looking at, you know, in the not-too-distant future, the FM area needing in excess of 30-some thousand dollars additional labor force, or 30,000 people for, in the labor force, in the next not-too-distant future. But the steering committee leadership was, the agencies involved were the Fargo-Moore Area Foundation, the Greater Fargo-Moore Economic Development Corporation, Fargo-Moore Convention and Visitors Bureau, United Way of Cast Clay, and the Chamber. And I, I'll leave this, these brochures with Vicki, and if any of you would like to look at them, I, I think Clay County certainly needs to do our part to support this initiative out there. It's, it's going to be in Clay County's best interest, as you remember, when Jim was here the other day, there are opportunities in Clay County for some of these new potential businesses and jobs to be created here, and we need to actively, in any way we can, participate. And they did also call for volunteers to serve in any of the, their committees, the breakdown of their committees, they, they have, they cultivate, which is to start it up, and then, and then attract, and build, and innovate, and so if any of you are interested, you can sign up to, in any one of those areas to help work on, and they were very much encouraging all of us to partake in, in one of those areas to volunteer. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I had nothing after our truth and taxation meeting last week. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended the Board of Equalization as well, after the board meeting with you folks. One thing that we did do, I'd scheduled in some training, I think I mentioned this one other time in a report, that I'd attended a little two-hour seminar on advertising, using radio to advertise for your employment positions, and also using it as a retention method as well. We had a presentation to the managers last week, I think there's some enthusiasm, and we aren't looking at necessarily spending more money than what we're spending, but we'd like to look at maybe utilizing the radio for getting the message out, for hiring some of these people. And one you mentioned today was a truck driver, a very limited market out there, and if you're an employed truck driver, chances are, you're not looking in the want ads for a job. But if you're a truck driver, and you're driving up and down the road, and you're doing it over the road, and now you hear an ad that you can be home every night, and things, you might go to our website and look on that. So, we are considering utilizing advertising dollars that we'd normally put in the paper for some of these. The same with, is public health, public health has been able to fill one or two of their positions, and we're thinking of trying to combine that into a radio ad along with it. And the reason why I mention it today, I don't know if you'd like to act on it formally, or just be informed that you may hear something on the radio, and you might wonder, why are we doing that, or whatever, but it's to attract a better or more expanded employment pool, if we can.
Kevin, you had a comment?
Well, Brian, does our, do we have any policies that, that states were limited to a certain media resource for, why do we even need to act if there isn't? Why, why wouldn't you have the discretion to, to advertise, and what you think is the best?
Yeah, I think we would, but here, here's the situation, if we advertise, and we, and we do it in a, in a little bit of a colorful way, and say, hey, here's a great place to work, Clay County, come and work, you know, and, and, and we list some of the things, hey, if you want a, a good retirement, if you want this, want this. hey, if you want a, a good retirement, if you want this, want this, and then your neighbor says, oh gee, I see, I see you're spending money on advertising now for positions, and hopefully you would say, yeah, so this is more information than anything. I think we have the authority to do so, but we're just trying to communicate that, if you hear it on the radio, that don't be surprised, if that's okay.
Every, every job that we post, we're spending money.
I, that's right, that's exactly right, yep.
I do have a comment quick on that. With that, I've noticed with the extension jobs, when they're advertising jobs, that we are, in a sense, a partner, those are never listed on the county website. Is there a reason why?
No.
We should at least have a link to where they-
Yeah, I look into that, and they actually apply through the associate, so we would have to have a link to their, to their, like, rather than apply straight-
Right, and I, but I think that's something we should, if we're, if it's Clay County dollars that are funded.
I agree.
Well, we could, we could list the Clay County opening, but then have a little deal where it sends them to apply to go to the state.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good, that's good, yeah.
Anything else, Brian?
I was just going to let Frank know, or the Commissioner Gross know, that at the last board meeting, he was appointed to a committee on the jail committee, a subcommittee for mental health. I don't know if he knew that yet or not, since he's just got that, in the UK, you read the minutes.
My emails and stuff.
Okay, good, good.
Next time, next time you're not here, you might be on some other page.
Yeah, congratulations.
Accidents, accordingly.
Congratulations, Frank.
Just maybe a question to you, you talked about some legislative matters, and going back to that performance standard, I'm glad we clarified that on, on the performance, but that was something that the legislature initiated a few years ago, because they wanted to assure that the, the citizen has access and has a comment area, that's why that survey is important. But that, that sparked my curiosity, would you like us to have the three legislators come in and present to you, since the session is over, and you do that once or twice a year, it seems like, so would you want that to occur, or should we reach out to them, see if we can schedule something?
If it works, it may be beneficial.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll do that. Several personnel matters, I guess, working with that employee, we attended that retention and equipment. We had a discussion on a simplex upgrade, and that's going to be very costly, they're doing some research on it right now in regards to, and that's the car strike, or the card strikes on the doors and the security in the, in the buildings, and it may involve quite a bit of money, and as the proposals get put together, we will bring that to the building, the campus building committee for consideration, because if, if the way it looks, I mean, it'll be in the tens of thousands of dollars, so we'll, we'll discuss that at committee before we go any direction on that. But there has been some work done on that. I sent you something out on the, on the diversion, I think I mentioned that last time, about the fact that the DNR had, there'd been information that the media obtained in regards to the DNR's EIS report, and the possibility that the boundary of the Dyke Dam would need to be, and I sent that information out to you, and I think that's important, because it does affect a lot more structures in Clay County, if that's moved further north, and a lot more people in Clay County, and, and you folks need to be aware of that, and, and we need to, we need to discuss that, I think, and, and-
But Brian, didn't the report just say, refer to that as an alternative?
Absolutely.
They didn't, they didn't state that that's what they were proposing.
Right, that's correct.
There's a difference there, because I, you know, I, I think when, they, when I read the board, they also did talk about the differences, that it would bring more properties in, and it would be more expensive, and it would be a reduced area, protected area, so.
Doesn't sound like the right plan, but-
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I think their job is to look at alternatives, and they found an alternative to, to the main plan, and they're basically down to those two. And I don't think they're going to say one over the other.
No, no, I think that's what the article said, they're not suggesting one or the other, but-
Their, the only thing that they really liked about moving it further north is then it did take what little impacts there already are in Wilkin and Richland County out of those counties.
Just expanded the impacts in Clay County.
Right, and Clay and Cast County.
And expands the impacts in Clay County. That's why I think it's an important issue for you folks to be thinking about, because, and also, there's a lawsuit out there that is, is being lodged against the diversion, and it's coming from the two counties to the south of us. If they take the impacts out of there, that, that's going to have, that's going to have an influence, so. And then, I guess, been a lot of work done on budgets in the county, and we'll be compiling that very soon, and scheduling meetings before you with the different departments presenting to you, and things like that, so, and then we continue with some work on some home considerations and things along those lines, so, yeah, it's been busy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Jenny, anything?
I do have one issue, Mr. Chair, just an update, on last Thursday, the 18th, we had our oral argument before the Minnesota Tax Court on our lawsuit with the Menards property, so that's the final step in presenting that case to the tax court judge, and then he will have, he didn't give us a timeframe, but I would estimate 30 to 60 days to issue his written decision. So that is reaching its conclusion, and we will have some finality and some decision here within the near future, and when that happens, I'll share it with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Vicki, anything for us? Nothing else?